I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morton, thank you for bringing us together this morning. And we want to look up to you today, the family of Mike Emmert, who is one of our partners, who was killed in a tragic accident last week. Just be with his family, comfort them with their grief. And we thank you for like that his life was just outstanding, an outstanding. But we have to be with our country. We've had a very contentious time here for the last week, in confirmation of the Supreme Court Justice. And there were no doubt hearings between all people involved in that, and we just ask you to do that. We thank you for our county officials, and we thank you for our county commissioners, and we thank you for their diligence and their integrity. And you are the commissioners today as they take up the specific county. Jesus.
Thanks, Jim. Next up is the approval demands. We have two sets of minutes, approval of the September 10th, 2018 meeting, and the September 24th, an entertaining motion. So moved. I'll second. Any discussion or changes before the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes to the people. Next up is approval of claims, and I'll turn it over to Jim.
All right. We have the claims docket, and the amount of $1,186,625.98. And that's up because of a wheel tax and LIT distributions. And then we also have the payroll claims docket from September 28th, in the amount of $337,804.70.
An entertaining motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second. Any questions or discussions? All in favor of approving the claims is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. What else you have for it?
Nothing at this point. They hear from me later on with the new grant, the funds that are coming up. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Karen. Karen, here.
The Perk has presented a contract for the purchase of a new microfilm equipment. If you know, the Perk is required to scan and store all court records, and has done so for some time, but that machine has had problems recently. So she has presented this contract. I reviewed it. I have no proposed changes. It is a one-time payment of $7,769, and that does include one year maintenance, which is $695, so it's actually the purchase and the first year maintenance paid in advance. And then, on an ongoing basis, the county will pay $695 for any of the maintenance.
This time, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase agreement of the microfilm equipment.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion or questions? Anything from the audience? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on, Brian Campbell says.
Yeah, he's picking up some resources, so each year we present the hazmat plan to the commissioners for your review and your signature. This is a plan that's updated every year. This year, we put a lot of work into it. We actually had a GIS layer made for firefighters and responders to be able to hopefully help them out a little quicker with information. So we're just asking that you review it. We had Brian drop it off, I think, last week electronically. I don't have a paper copy with me, but I'm not sure if you want to table it and take a look at it for a lot of changes. There is a record of change in the front of it, so that will help you guide through there. So welcome to review it and sign next time if you might, or if you had a chance to look at it.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the updates to the hazmat claim from the EMA Director.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Anything from the audience? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks, Sherri.
You're welcome.
Next up is Jim, County Engineer.
We've got a couple things for approval, but I want to give commissioners kind of updating where we are right now. Tomorrow, we're going to be making a presentation in front of Indiana Department of Transportation for the tracks overpass project at County Road 650. That, State of Indiana is actually putting together a program that's just going to be state funding to try to eliminate some of the dangerous track crossings. So we are going to make that presentation, and John's going to attend that. Community crossing matching grant was submitted in the end of September. That mainly is going to be County Road 500 South from 500 East to State Road 136. It's going to be about 4.3 miles. It's going to consist of widening the shoulders and then complete overlay. There will be also some culvert replacement. Our bridge inventory report is completed by American Structure Point. There's three binders that are about four inches thick, if anybody wants to look at them. The other thing is, there will be three large culverts that we're going to be replacing. Be long as net, we're providing a proposal so that we can kind of bundle those up and actually get those bid, so that we can get those replaced. They are, the three of them are really advanced repair. With the cumulative, a lot of this is part of the cumulative bridge fund that we're going to be using. We're going to start the engineering on Bridge 182 replacement. Bridge 79, start the engineering on replacement, realigning that bridge. I've got before you an on-call contract with American Structure Point. They're going to assist me in the bridge asset management plan, which is required by the state, and then also give me some recommendation on Lyell Creek. The approach slab there is actually undermined and is collapsing. The bridge is in fine shape, but it's just the pavement. So hopefully, we can just ground that and bring that back up, and then replace pavement on either side, so take out the hump out of that. So hopefully, that will proceed. The berm and ditch cutting equipment, with the council's recommendation, go ahead, proceed. I'll start looking into lease agreement. I think we're going to get that approved at the council meeting tomorrow. So once that's approved, I'll move forward with that. We've got about 10 bridges that we need to have scour protection around the foundations, so we're going to be working on that, getting bid documents. And then we have three bridges that need to be rehabbed, basically deck replacements, which is Bridge 66, 142, and 193. That pretty much summarizes that. On the regional sewer district, we have given the notice proceed to Eagle Valley to start that sewer project. We're just waiting for, I believe, one more permit from Endo on that now proceed. VS Engineering is going to be doing the oversight. DLC will be doing the inspection of that project, and then I will act as a contract administrator for that project. We have selected GAI consultants to analyze the existing sewer treatment plant, and we will go through that process and put construction plans together to probably double the size of that sewer treatment plant. Asbury is doing some monitoring and sampling out there for us to look at the flows coming into the plant, and then sampling just to look at the type of material that we're having to treat there. Next thing with redevelopment commission, we're working with Indiana American Water Company for a main extension on Sabril 32. So we are, John Frye and I are working with the wire company to negotiate that. On a new thing at all for this proposal, we are looking at kind of space planning for all the departments. As you know, the courts are putting pressure on wanting to take this over, so we're just going to do a program study on that, and then I'll present that, and if that's satisfactory, move forward with that. Then the last thing, which John Frye volunteered me for this, the Federal Highway Administration is coming out with a pilot program. It's basically local road safety plan. Montgomery County is one of five counties that will participate in this study, which is a lot of web seminars, training in Savannah, Georgia for five days, and then follow-up next year with a conference in Wichita, Kansas. And federal government's paying for the trip and accommodations for that. So basically with that, I've got two things on the list, on all for American Structure Point. Dan has reviewed the contracts, minor some changes to that that will afford to American Structure Point with their approval of those changes. We'll ask the commissioners to go ahead and approve that, subject to Dan's satisfaction. And then also with being long as in net, we are going to do some traffic studies in the general area of Country Club Road. Just trying to get a better understanding. We've got 30% construction plans on Country Club Road. At this point, I'm kind of evaluating that and seeing if we need to kind of step back and reevaluate that project. So, you know, the county's been, going to be spending $1.3 million, and I'd like to see if there's a better way that we could save money and use that money in other projects.
Jim, can you just, for the public information, give the amounts for the American Structure Point and the BLN agreements?
Yeah, the American Structure Point is an on-call for $50,000. The one for being long as net is for $11,300.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the on-call bridge engineering service and bridge management with American Structure Point, as an on-call basis.
So moved.
I'll second. Any questions or discussion?
Subject to certain changes.
Yeah, subject to the changes that we got in the email. Okay. Can you forward them this morning?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of approving the agreement with the changes recommended by our attorney, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next up is the agreement. Yeah, I'm coming back.
Oh, you're coming back.
Next up is the agreement to obtain two-way traffic counts on Country Club Road for BLN. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Any comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, for eight years, the other way.
I thought Jim's report was very impressive. The one thing that I think would be helpful at least to me, when you talk about bridges instead of their numbers, or in addition to their numbers, would you also tell us where they are?
Sure, yeah.
Not, you don't have to do that today, but in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Deanna. Anything else for the public? All in favor of the agreement to obtain two-way traffic count from BLN for $11,300, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes to the people. Okay. Okay, next up is old business, second reading orders 2018-27. I'll turn it over to Jim.
This is the order that creates the 2018 State Homeland Security Program Award Fund. This is a fund that's needed because the emergency management agency has received a grant in the amount of $137,468. The, that is sole source funds, and the funds are to be used in conformance with that, and this creates a non-reverting fund as a placeholder for those funds, and then the, this ordinance also authorizes the EMA to administer the agreement.
Thanks. This is second reading. At this time, I entertain a motion on orders 2018-27.
So moved.
I'll second. Any questions or discussions? Anything from you, Sherri? Jim? Anything from the public? All in favor of approving 2018-27, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to new business, up next is Tony Stinson and Bill Sylvester with Apex.
Thank you for having us. On behalf of Bill and the rest of the EMA team, we appreciate your time. We have a couple of reasons for being out here today. First, we wanted to give you an update on the financial situation for the current plan, for the current plan year, which runs March 1st through the end of the calendar year. And then we also wanted to talk a little bit about what we're expecting with the renewal, which should be coming up hopefully within the next week, week and a half. In your folders on the left-hand side, you have a report that looks like this. We're going to start with that. This is the financial summary report. I'm actually going to ask you to turn to the second page. The first page has run out from your old Cigna plan. We use that for projecting claims, but your actual financial costs under this plan are signified on the second page under GPA. A couple of things that I want to point out with regard to this are your expected claims from March 1st through the end of August are $3,700, I'm sorry, $371,006. If you come over to the net paid, you will notice that you are at, this is column D, A plus B minus C, you are at $322,000, so you are running under expected. So just as a quick reminder, when the underwriters are looking at a group, they set a number for what they expect those claims to be. And then because life happens and they are not psychic, they build in a corridor for your maximum liability. So you're actually running better than what they are expecting you to run for the plan year currently. You're at 87% of expected and 69% of your maximum liability. So those are both very good numbers in how the plan is running. Your plan is currently also set up so that you have a $75,000 specific deductible. The specific deductible is essentially the deductible that the county is responsible for, for every single member on the plan. Your first responsibility is $75,000. We have two lasers on the plan. Both of those lasers have accumulated less than that $75,000, so those are both good numbers as well. So you haven't taken on any additional liability for the large claims that you have. We also have behind this report, we have a report here with ELAP on it. This is a report specifically just of the financial situation with the facility claims. So as a reminder, facility claims are inpatient hospitalization, outpatient hospitalization, and surgery centers, certain imaging centers, lab or tools, anything where there's a building charge in addition to the professional charges that the doctors have. Those claims are being run through ELAP. They have billed $366,000 of claims. The allowed audit is $100,876. When we add in the ELAP fee, the total plant costs are $144,892, creating a savings from the billed cost of $221,949, or an effective savings percentage of 60.5%, as compared to where you were with Cigna, which was a 35% discount. We're looking at a real savings of approximately $93,000. Any questions on those? One last item that I want to address retrospectively is, you do have a program in place called Nurse Navigator. Nurse Navigator is kind of an elevated customer service that allows your members to talk directly to registered nurses about their plans, finding providers, transitioning medical care. Through August, we've had 19 members use Nurse Navigator for a total of 15 and a half hours of time, and 560 of those minutes were dedicated to provider research. So someone calls in, they want to make sure that they're going to someplace that is going to have a lower likelihood of balanced billing with this plan. Nurse Navigator can call to those providers, explain the plan, and get them to agree upfront that they're not going to charge anything in addition, and just have them go. Any questions about that? So now prospectively, in the right-hand side of your folder, we have our market analysis report, and this is based on the projections that we have done. Your incumbent Swiss Re and your incumbent administrator GPA have not yet issued a renewal, which is not unusual. You had a level funded plan under Cigna, which means that this is your first foray into true self-funding. And because of that, they want to see as many claims as they can before they issue a renewal. So it's not unusual that we wait until we get September claims in. So we have done some illustrative work for you on page two. We are anticipating a 5% increase to the administrative fixed costs. On page three, it gets a little bit confusing, so I just wanted to point out what we've got here. We have the current contract, which is based on a 10-month contract, because we started this in March and we're running through to the end of the year. But we want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, so we've also annualized that to show you if you had 12 months under this contract, what those costs would be. The third column over is our illustrative renewal. These are numbers that had already been shared. Those are based, the first set in the middle are based on your 10-month, and then we also have the comparison to a 12-month contract. And then we do have one quote in from a competitive reinsurance carrier, Sun Life. They are not firm. They are getting the information that they will need to firm those numbers, but as you can see, based on how they are coming in with regard to fixed costs, our estimate is a 30% increase, and they are coming in at a 7% increase. Our claims factors look like they were going up about 21%, and their claims factors are going up 19. And claims, it's always important to remember, you guys are running under the expected now, and these are based on expected and maximum, so if you are running under expected, this is just saying from the maximum liability standpoint, it's a 19% increase. That does not mean that you're going to pay out 19% additional. Your claims will be your claims. And then the last page out here, you do have organ transplant coverage. This is a fully insured policy that essentially removes the liability for any organ transplants from the self-funded plan. You get a credit for your claims factors, as well as your fixed stock loss costs for having this policy in place, and we're anticipating a 5% increase there. Are there any questions on what we are showing, what we're expecting, or what Sun Life has tentatively on the table?
Well, obviously, saying money's great, you know, taking care of our employees is paramount.
Sure.
You know, I do know we've had a lot of changes, and it's been an education process. And again, it continues to be.
Yes.
So we've all got to continue to remember that, work towards that. As far as the financial side, this is obviously going to have an effect to the county's cost for us.
I would also like to address the communication and education. For the last three months, I believe, we have come out here on a monthly basis and made ourselves available for one-on-one consulting to your employees. So we've had not as big a turnout as I had hoped, but we are going to continue to make ourselves available for those folks who really want to see somebody face-to-face. We're also still available via phone and email for anyone who has any concerns.
You guys have done a good job of that. I'd like to say you made yourself available on every turn, and I appreciate you helping educate all of us.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I had the privilege to sit down with Tony and Bill a few weeks ago and kind of go over this a little bit prior to. Obviously, as you said, John, it's just a work in progress here, because it is a different type of thing that we haven't been used to. When we noticed there was problems, we had information coming, seeing those problems. I thought the easiest way was is for, rather good, by phone or emails. Tony just came in here and to meet with these guys one-on-one, help work through these claims. So if you're department head, you're like an official whatsoever, have any input from your employees, if you have any problems, don't hesitate to let us know. Tony will get out here, she will help you take care of it. And this is just a big piece of the puzzle we've been working on since 2013 when we opened that clinic. You know, it's going on its sixth year now, and has been nothing but positive and savings for us as far as the county and all the entities involved, actually. But one thing that we've been trying to get to is this fully self-funded policy. You know, we found something that we think works, it is different, it does take a little bit of adjustment, but it'll work through, and I think it'll be a great thing for everybody.
Absolutely.
And thanks again for making yourself available when we need you.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. The last thing that I wanted to address is our renewal strategy. One of the pieces of feedback that we have received currently, the physician charges and the professional charges are being repriced at the 90th percentile of usual and customary. And what that essentially means is that for every provider in a given area, they're going to rank from most expensive to least expensive, and they're going to allow nine out of 10 charges to stand. So some people are going to be going to that top most expensive doctor, and they will see a repricing. For the majority of the people, the allowed amount is going to be higher than what the billed amount is, so for those professional charges, they may not see any kind of discount at all. We are going to be looking at a couple of different alternatives for that, that will bring in that reference-based reimbursement to the physician side, that will give us a lot more flexibility on where we set that number, so that we can be comparable to approximately the Cigna discount, so that the doctors are getting a fair amount back. We don't want to undercut them. We also want to make sure that people are getting a discount if possible, so we've got a couple options on the table for that. The other thing that I wanted to address is that because the plan is running so well, one of the things that we recommended for you when we moved this was, don't change your funding levels. And so as a result of that, if the plan year were to have ended at the end of August, you have over $200,000 that has been funded and not paid out in claims. One of the things that this does is allows you to create a reserve, which is going to create that stability moving forward. Essentially, you will have claims that you have not paid for under this plan, but have been incurred under this plan, that in the next year and the years following, you're going to be responsible for. It will also allow you to kind of set aside a piggy bank, so that if these rates spike, or if you have a bad year, that you don't have to max fund every single year, and you can take a little bit more of the risk on the funding side, knowing that if things go higher than what you're expecting, you have a piggy bank to draw from. So I do recommend that a good portion of that money be set aside for in a non-reverting fund to help create that stability, but it also gives us the opportunity for you guys to consider if there are options to give back to the employees. So I wasn't sure if there was any, if you wanted to talk about those options at this point.
I think we'll wait till the renewal comes in.
Okay. All right.
And we'll see what happens.
That's fine. All right, we can do that. So we're anticipating that we get the renewal in within the next week, week and a half. I know your next meeting is the 22nd, and both Bill and I are unavailable for that meeting. One of the challenges that we have is that with self-funding, time is not necessarily on our side. Once we get those numbers in, it's very important to at least stop the underwriting. Because what can happen is, if something, if someone gets diagnosed with a condition, we have to disclose that, and if the under- to disclose that and if the underwriting hasn't stopped yet, those rates and terms may change. So once we get those in, we will be spreadsheeting this and we'll be back in touch about how we get you that information. I'd really rather not, one of the reasons we wanted to come out here with these preliminary numbers was because we didn't want to wait until the first meeting in November which I think is the 13th. So we will figure out the best way to go about getting those to you so that we can stop the underwriting process. So it's never ever in my entire 14 and a half years been where the underwriting process has not stopped and hey, the underwriter thinks that it's getting better so they're going to reduce turns. It's never that way. So we want to get you that information as soon as we have it available. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I think we're good, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks Bill.
Okay, moving on to B which is ordinance introduction 2018-28.
Yes, this is first reading of an ordinance which would establish the 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant Fund. EMA has received $9,369.10 in a grant from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security which is primarily to be used to assist the coroner by purchasing and providing various equipment that he needs. This grant is an annual grant cycle as you've seen before, so it would create that fund and describe the use of funds and any unexpended funds of this grant due to be returned to the department and this would create a non-reverting fund and also authorize the EMA to administer the grant.
Questions? Sheri, anything to add?
I do not.
So this will be on our agenda for the October 22nd, first for action. Moving on to 2018-29.
This ordinance will create the 2018 Health Department MCCF Drug-Free Montgomery County Grant Fund. The Health Department applied for and received a grant from the Montgomery County Community Foundation in the amount of $6,610 to create a website for the drug-free Montgomery County program. This ordinance would establish that fund to receive the funds from the grant and then allow the use of those funds accordingly. This also is a grant which is conditioned upon the fact that any of its been the funds had to be returned to the foundation. This is also a non-reverting fund and the ordinance also authorizes the Health Department to administer the fund.
Okay. Anything near them? Amber?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. That'll be on our October 22nd agenda as well. Anything under other business?
If I may, Amber, we were going to talk about first reading for a health care coalition grant, do you know?